Everybody mopped down and. Okay, good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And if you would please stand and ask Mr. Don Polloso for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the freedom to meet and to plan. Lord, I pray for our country. I pray for our community. I pray for our world as we're facing the uncertainty. I pray for our leaders who are in control, Lord. I pray for wisdom when making decisions. I pray for the health of our community, Lord, instruct us and guide us in the ways to go. Thank you for this meeting, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes ma'am, we have one item, the proposed fee to provide rapid food tests in our primary care clinic as part of the coronavirus testing. It's from the Health Department. And the abstract should be in your material in front of you.
Right. May I want you to add that to the consent agenda?
Yes ma'am. And we can remove the closed session for economic development as well.
So that would be item A of the closed session?
Yes ma'am.
All right. Any other additions to the agenda? Your motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. We'll move along to page 91 of your agenda. And that is the public hearing on Lee County's goal of participation of minority historically underutilized businesses in construction and repair contracts. Ms. Parrish, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. As we're getting ready to bid on some of our products moving forward, we're just taking a look at the contracting and purchasing policy and making some updates that we have found that we need to update. And one of those was the Minority Outreach Plan. The board in your packet of commissioners in October of 1990 previously held a public hearing and adopted the Minority Business Outreach Plan with a verifiable goal for participation by minority businesses for the 10% goal, which that is also the goal set by state statute and what the state is governed by when they go out to bid. There have been some changes to the statute since, so we decided just to go ahead and be safe and hold a new public hearing. We have also drafted the minority business policy, which is in the agenda packages, which will also be an addendum exhibit to the contracting and purchasing policy. Essentially, what it states out, sets out is the hub requirements that must, that the local government must abide by when we have informal bids and then also when we have formal bidding requirements. When you get into the formal hub requirements, we also have this set out by policy that the contractors must have affidavits that they must fill out saying that they've tried to meet the goal as well. We looked at many different policies. They all tend to be very similar, so we have brought it to the board and just would like to have a public hearing if anyone wants to address it with the board.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor?
I do.
Okay.
I'm speaking in favor.
Okay, that's not your thing, okay? Anyone that would like to speak against? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will revisit this later on in the, in the meeting. We don't have anyone signed up for public comments. Ms. Campbell, did anybody send anything via email? Okay, all right, thank you. Old Business is the Lee County Market Comparative and Pay Plan Study. Ms. McGee?
We're passing out a hard copy of our point.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we, we told the consultants that they did not need to be here tonight, that we would handle their presentation for them. They both live on the further western part of the state and elderly and did not want, you know, travel in the tent. So we told them we would take care of them.
Well, they offered, but they were three older. They didn't have to come all the way from the bowling lot, so that's good.
We appreciate their offer. You're all right.
We can talk, Bill, if you want. I can do, we can do that.
Okay.
This presentation was put together by the consultants and I worked with him today. And I have his phone number if we need to call him, but I hope we don't. This is just a view of the Lee County workforce that they did at the beginning of the salary study. If you look at the board, that's a scattered deviation bell curve. And a mature workforce typically two-thirds of the workforce would be located in the middle and the other one-third, you know, could be on the sides. But that's a typical bell curve. So we have our own bell curve, and this is employees distributed by years of employment. If you look at that, you'll see that we are, we have 22% of our employees that have been here less than 22, less than two years. That's 22%. And we have 41.4% that have been here less than five years. And our average years of employment in 2019 was 8.9 years. And in 2017, it was 9.2 years, as you see, but it is going down. Years in position, it just shows you how many years in position that we've had. Our average years in position is 5.5 years, which is not a real long time, but we had a lot of retirees over the last few years. This is a chart that talks about the percentage of salary above or the minimum grade. And that is the salary grade range from minimum to maximum in our pay plan, which means it's 59% from the minimum to the max in the pay plan. And the midpoint is 29.5% above the minimum of the pay plan. And that's represented by the, by the black bar. The number of employees with salaries below the midpoint of the job rate in their salary range is about 96.1%. These are numbers that were in your report, if you saw that. But this chart indicates that 54.5% of the employees have salaries less than 10% above their salary grade minimums. So that shows that. And if you look on the right side, we have employees in the last part of the pay plan. We have 19% of the people that aren't anywhere near the max of the pay range. The next screen shows 10% of the employees by classification. These are the people that we hired, the last 10% that we hired. If you look, the biggest place that we hired was detention officer, which you might call them jailers. We call them detention officers. If you look, we had five positions we had to fill. And we go down to the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Deputies. Then we go into DSS, and then again, the SROs. And this shows you how, the people we had to hire in the last 10% of the workforce. Okay?
Joyce, IMC too?
Uh huh. Yes, sir.
As DSS?
Yes, sir. It's Income Management's case worker.
Okay, thank you.
They're the people that still take the one-on-one interviews with the people coming in that need help. The last 10% that we, by department, it shows that DSS, we hired the most in DSS for the last 10% because DSS had a large turnover of people that left. So we hired 12 people and then we go to the Sheriff, Lincoln Center Health Department, and on that, and that's where most of the jobs were open, had opened.
Are any of those DSS departures retirement or just job changes?
Job changes. I don't think there was any retirements in DSS. Next is the average market salary comparisons. This is a comparison they did with all the cities and counties that we had, and I'll show you those broken down too. But our average salary in our, for our employees is $43,763. And it's 16% below the market average of $50,776. And that's of cities and counties. This is the county market salary comparison for 11.5% below the average. Market is 48,690, and our average is 43,763. You can see the average in the middle, and you can see where we are. Those counties that, that they looked at was Cumberland County, Harnett County, Moore County, Chatham County, and then Johnston County and Wake County. The observation of the consultants were that our pay grade minimum to max is 59%. And our pay grade differential is 0% between each grade, which is 4.6% between each grade, from like a grade 55 to a grade 56. Then we'll get into the market study. The counties that we looked at, I just talked about those. The cities that we looked at were Apex, Dunn, Fayetteville, Holly Springs, Morrisville, and Sanford. This is just an example of what we looked at. We took a sheriff's deputy and we went through each one of the cities and counties, and you can see what they paid. The senior thing. Lee County is paying at a grade 66, 38, 725. The recommendation was 38, 725 or 67. So what we did, we took in between that and we're recommending a great, changing the grade 66 to 39, 548. Instead of going to the 4506, we're saying go in between 39, 548. We took every classification and did the same thing with it, every classification that we have. This is just an example of what we got. Again, we go back to the bell curve. And we're looking at compa ratios to calculate where employees need to be in the pay range. And so what we're going to do is use a compa ratio up to 10 years. And so we start out with zero, which is less than a year. We go all the way up to 10, which is a one compa ratio, which means they've been here 10 years. And our midpoint will be at the one, 10 years.
And that's the objective of the market, the midpoint of the market for that position. So the objective is to go from zero to, you know, the market midpoint within 10 years. Because that's, that five to 10-year period is when we're really losing our people. We're training them, getting them here. We're not moving them through the pay grade, and then they're leaving.
The growth needs to happen in that.
You see what happens in places like Moore, where they hire people. Our, our policy says we start them at the minimum of the pay rate. So what the other counties are doing, they look at their years of experience in that, that type of position from the other, where they're coming from. And they're placing them into their pay rate. Or they might have four years' experience. So they would put them at a 48, 9, which they would get it four years, start at four years' experience instead of us trying to start them at minimum. This way, you bring them in because they're experienced and you pay for the experience.
Right. And that's how they were cherry picking our employees.
Is they were, they were paying them, because around us, this particular company, our group, did the pay study for everybody around us. So they were telling us how they were cherry picking us and taking our experienced people.
So that's what we've got to do is work at having a plan like this to where we move people. Once you get five years' experience, you move them a step. And then when you get six years, you move again. But when you get to the midpoint of the range, you stop. And the county manager and I are going to have to come up with a way to look at those people that are at midpoint going forward. We haven't decided yet on that. We've got some ideas on that. But the big thing is to get people to the market.
Right.
And that's what we have to do, is get them to market. And the recommendations were to recommend that we adopt a market-based pay plan for each position in the pay plan where they go. I've got a spreadsheet that they fixed for us, and it's been a booger to keep up with all these months because every time we change something, we have to change something with them. But we take every employee and place them where they need to be in the pay plan, based on years in the position, not years of service, but years in the position. Like if someone gets promoted, they go back to the beginning of the pay plan to work their way through years in that job. Increase grades differential from 4.6 to 4.8 to be, yeah, moving our market forward so we can be close to the market. Next year, they say we should increase it 5% and go back and change our pay plan next year. And reduce the pay grade range from 59 to 55%. And adopt the philosophy of support our mission and our vision space. Implementation recommendations, move the classification to market-supported pay grades. Trace employees' salaries on their pay grade at the compa ratio assigned. Pretty much just to repeat what we said before, but use the compa ratios from 0 to 1. And we did find in the study, they looked at every individual employee, and we did find that some people were due more than $5,000. So to keep the costs down, we're going to cap that rate at $5,000 if only got that much. But they would still be eligible to move each year till they get to the midpoint. Right?
Correct.
The implementation recommendations, it's not cheap. It started out at a million and six. But by changing the percentages between the grades and everything, we came up with $530,438. The FICA and all the benefits and everything, it's 125, 289. And required funding will be 655, 727. And we'd be like to do this during the budget, of the upcoming budget.
And that would get all the employees.
Moving in the tracks.
They would put all the employees on track.
Now, we, you know, we're not asking the board to vote on this tonight because it was a lot of information to throw at you at one time. But we probably will discuss it again before we actually jump into the budget, you know, to show you the whole budget, because we need to know whether we're going to put this in the budget, because it changes all the salary numbers quite a bit. And, or we, you know, don't want it in there. So we'll discuss it again. But we're not asking for any action tonight. Lot of information.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No, but this is long overdue?
Yes. Thank you.
Long overdue.
Well, the last time.
We're getting a lot of heading on, so yes, it is.
The last time we did a pay study was August 2015, and it was done by Springstead. And the cost was approximately $281,000 that, that they said we needed. But at the time, we could not see, could not afford it. And we, the only thing we spent then to increase pay was $60,039. And that was in 2015, so it's been about five years. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Yes.
But you did it in about 15 minutes less than if the other gentleman would have been here.
Also, thank you. Also, thank you.
Yeah, double thank you.
No, great job, Joyce. Okay. Item B, under Old Business, that's on page 147 of your agenda, is the Amendment for Agreement Regarding Funds for SEAL II Services. And I think that's Ms. Parrish.
Sure. And I asked Mr. Randolph to be here in case y'all had questions that I couldn't answer. But if you recall, the board held two public hearings on this project back in 2016 and approved an agreement with SEAL Services. This is a, see, what's the name of this, the building, which one?
What, a building reuse plan?
Is this the building reuse, sorry?
This is building reuse through the Rural Center.
Sorry.
Which is now under Department of Commerce. So this was a Rural Center grant. And this one was done a little bit differently than some of the ones in the past. So kind of under the new rules that Department of Commerce had, so.
But what, what happened was Mr. Randolph had brought it to us. They had completed their jobs and investment. They've received proof of that. But the agreement had technically expired, and so we just wanted to put in an amendment just to extend it so that way we could facilitate the payment. My understanding is we get the money, it was a $3,750 match that the county had to provide. We're basically the passer again.
Which was paid for by the company. So it's, the county doesn't really have money coming out of our general fund to pay for it. Like I said, it's a little bit different way than it's been done in the past. The 5% match was paid by the company, and they have paid the money. We already have their $3,750.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just, just a question. What's our policy on average wage? What's that amount?
I think now it's up to, right at $40,000, close to $40,000. At the time this was signed, I want to say it was like 37 or 38. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Removed.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. New Business, page 159, the adoption of Lee County's Outreach Plan and goal for participation by minority businesses in building, construction, and repair contracts, as promised?
Yes. So now that we've held the public hearing, we can ask the board to adopt the policy, which, so essentially on this part of the board, you just have, the agenda, you just have the resolution to adopt. And then once you adopt this, and then later on in the agenda, you'll also be adopting the purchasing policy, which this will be an exhibit two. But like I said, again, this just spells out the rules for both informal and formal hub participation. It's our outreach plan that the county must follow and bidders must follow in construction contracts. So I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has. Since we did hold a public hearing, we did check. I don't think we have an official policy, but just to be safe, if you could vote to waive the policy.
All right, move to waive the policy.
Okay. All those in favor of waiving the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there a motion on the adoption?
So moved to adopt the resolution and policy incorporated in the Lee County's purchasing policy.
Okay. All those in favors?
I have a question for Councilor. Who would the minority business owner contact if they've got a question about the criteria, how to get involved and all that?
So they can contact Santiago's Position. I don't know the name of it. I should know this officially titled, the official title.
Development Director.
All right. Is it online?
Development Services Director.
It will be. We're working on getting all this stuff posted to our website as well. And then any, I think the goal eventually is to have a list maintained by county government as well. And then that way, when we go to bid, we can contact the people who have contacted us to be placed on our internal list as well. But yes, we'll have it on the, there's like the state hub website we can post these to that then hub businesses can go and look at. But we're going to try to internally keep that database as well.
One concern I have is quite often, some individuals want to apply, don't seem to understand that they may also have to bid on the, on the projects. And that's where the reluctance comes in. But it's mainly because some individuals think that it means you automatically get to participate. That's why I want the clarity in place.
Correct. And they have to be certified. There's a certification. I don't, I don't know what that process looks like, but they do have, there's a certification process that.
I do. I used to handle it at the state, so. That's why I understand the problems that we run into when we don't have significant minority participation.
And we also have a duty to report both for informal and formal. What, informally, what we did as an organization to solicit. And then when we move to the formal ranges, we'll also have a duty. There's two different forms that county staff will use to upload that. And that will all be funneled through the, that is it, the county position, Santiago's.
Okay, thank you.
Development Director.
Development Director.
He was supposed to go to, he was supposed to go to some training next week, Thursday, Thursday evening. But I don't think he'll be going.
Not happening now. Okay, so we have a motion. Any more questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. There's no way to shorten this one. Page 192 of your agenda, the resolution authorizing exemption from the request for qualifications process. All projects involving architectural, engineering, surveying, construction management at risk, design-build services, and private-public partnership construction services where the estimated professional fee is less than $50,000. Sorry, but that's the title.
That's a mouthful.
I had to practice.
I had to practice.
So again, this is set by statute. It's called the Mini Brooks Act, which sets out the requirements for procuring those, for architects and engineering surveys, surveyors, and alternative construction delivery method firms. So when the professional fee is expected to be $50,000 or less, the county can exempt itself from the competitive bidding process. However, in order to do this, the guidance is that, that's done on a case-by-case basis. So what you have in front of the board today is a general resolution exempting us from, or exempting the county from competitive bid for those types of professional services fees. However, what we also have is an exemption form for department heads. And instead of having them come. And instead of having them come to the board each time we need to get a professional fee in these matters, we delegated that authority to the county manager to sign. Eventually, the contract will have to come back to the board regardless because it's over $50,000. But on the front end, so we don't have to continue to bring projects back to the board to help facilitate that. We were asking and suggesting that the board adopt the policy and then authorize the manager to exempt on a case-by-case basis. And again, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Or a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, page 166 is the adoption of the revised Lee County purchasing and contracting policy. And it's Ms. Mittler.
Good evening. In your agenda, you should have a complete copy of the purchasing policy along with several new exhibits that have been attached that Ms. Parrish has talked to you about tonight. Those being Exhibit D, which is the minority business and historically underutilized business participation outreach plan and guidelines. Exhibit E is to dispute resolution policy. Exhibit F is the request for qual, excuse me, qualifications exemption form that she just talked to you about, exempting people from the, under the Mini Brooks Act, under $50,000. And there's also a new form for sole source justification. As you can see on the agenda abstract, when Ms. Parrish became aware of some of the issues with our minority outreach plan, we went back and reviewed our whole purchasing policy and found that we needed to make some other updates to it to provide more information to our departments on bidding and the formal and informal limits. Another issue that came up in reviewing some of the policies, and we did, we looked at several different policies, larger counties, counties in our population group, and other things. But one thing that came to my attention was the contracting authority of our manager. In our budget ordinance, we also addressed that in addition to our policy. Our manager has been at $20,000 for several years. In reviewing policies from counties around us, we found that Chatham had, Chatham's manager has authority up to $100,000. Hornet has $100,000, Moore does $50,000, which ties into the Mini Brooks exemption. And looking at other counties in our population group, they ranged anywhere from the 20, very few were still at 20. Haywood County was one of the few that's at 20. Most everybody is either at 30, 50, 90, or 100, and there's varying qualifications. The 90 is the state's formal threshold for bidding, purchases of goods and service, goods and equipment. $50,000 ties into the Mini Brooks Act that you just heard about. $100,000, I don't know why someone picked 100. So I could, I could justify the 30, the 90, the 50. 100 would kind of throw me because it just makes your brackets broke down. 30 is the state's informal threshold. Now, we informally bid anything over $5,000. So after reviewing this, we did, in this policy, raise the manager's authority to $30,000 if you so choose to approve that at this time. Other than that, the other changes, like I said, were relatively minor other than additions of the additional exhibits. But we tried to analyze this and pull all the information. When we did this last, I kept it kind of brief, and we had other documents people could go look at. We found that didn't work the best in the world. So we took advantage of this to really try to lay out so they have one place to go to get everything. So at this time, we would ask that you consider the approval of the policy, including the increase of the manager's authority to $30,000.
And if I may, just real brief, sorry to interrupt, but I hope, on the agenda was the memo that I just kind of broke down. The other thing just to touch on, because I didn't touch on it, but we did lower our formal bidding for the construction and repair from 500 to 300, and that just follows that formal hub, which the contractors have to follow. And as we've talked about in staff, is that really there's not a whole lot of between 3 and 5. Normally, our projects, from what I understand, is either like 100, or they're well above 3 or 5, so. No, that's okay, I've happened to notice that, but that was.
I moved to adopt the revised Lee County purchasing and contracting policy before somebody moved it to 100,000. I'll stick with this period.
Stay with the 30?
That's right, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I was going to do it.
Any, any discussion? I have one question, and I don't know whether to direct it to you, or you, or you, or a combination of all three. I'll be.
John.
But is, is there a benefit to moving it to 50 to match with the Mini Brooks Act? Or not? I know you recommended the 30, but I'm just.
My opinion personally, it would just speed up the process of certain actions. Because it just, if we were to run into a situation and we needed to get a consultant quickly, at 50,000, you know, with him only having 30, he can exempt it, but it's still got to come to you for approval. That's the biggest thing with the higher limits, is it can just speed up the flow of the process because we can move with his approval versus, you know, having to make sure we come back to the board.
Right.
You can always, if you were to consider, ask that anything he approves over a certain amount be reported to you.
That was my only.
That's what he has to do on change orders anyway.
Let me test drive this one first.
Okay, I understand, I got you.
Let me get comfortable with the.
I understand, we can always hold an emergency meeting if we need to authorize something.
Madam Chair, can I ask, Dr. Crumpton, Lisa, or have we run into situations where the 20,000, I mean, we're changing from 20 to 30? How many times has that happened in the past five years?
As far as having to come to the board with anything that's over 20?
Yes.
Quite a bit, okay. But, you know.
How much would this alleviate going to the 30,000 level?
It will alleviate, you know, some of the, mainly, most of the stuff is in Russell's area. And it has to do with repair of buildings and, you know, HVAC units and that kind of stuff, which we have to do anyway. So most of that would be in that area, and.
We did need an emergency meeting to do it.
Yeah, so it's, it's. We have, we have tried to do this before, where we've tried to increase the threshold and, and, but, you know, I learned to deal with it. But it does hold things up, so, especially when we have something that, like we have a HVAC unit that breaks, we have to make the call to, you know, what we're going to do in the interim until I can get to the board to get it approved. So this will help. And like Mr. Reeve said, let's, you know, let's give 30,000 a test drive and see how that works out for everybody.
One other thing I do want to point out is vehicle purchases. We, a lot of times they fall between the 20 and 30. So what the policy says is that if we are buying a vehicle on state contract that is below 30,000, the manager will approve it. If we are bidding out a vehicle regardless of the cost, that that will come to you for approval. So if it goes out for public bid and is not purchased from state contract, you will have the approval process. I do want to point that out.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, item D on page 259, declare residents located at 192 Tabitha Lane as surplus and authorize staff to solicit sealed bids. Ms. Parrish?
Yes. So this is part of the site, the county purchase is part of Project Forge. It has a residence on the site of the property, and we would like to move that residence. So we're asking that the county declare it surplus personal property, because we're going to ask for it to be severed from the property. And then staff is going to advertise and solicit bids and then ask for sealed bids. So we've been working with General Services with Mr. Spivey, and he'll get ready to bid that out and get sealed bids. And hopefully, someone will put a bid to move it, and it'll go to the lowest, or the highest responsible, responsive bidder.
We have had interest in the House.
Oh, okay, good.
I think we could demolish it, but it would cost very much money.
One thing I keep in mind, when we do demolish it out, we have a different outlook on it. Because when you tear it down, if it has any asbestos type materials in it, then that responsibility comes to us. But if we sell it as is, then it's the buyers that's up to them, and they will move it home. But when we get into demo, you know, you break into asbestos fibers, and then we got another scenario because I ran into that on the properties, the Swain properties. It ended up costing us quite a bit because of the asbestos side. And this, you know, we don't never know to get into it. So to our advantage, if someone buys a nice home, it would be good if someone moved, it's got some buildings that will go with it as well, too. So somebody looking past where someone close by may have properties that they can move this home to. And it's really nice, they are well taken care of. It's our home, but I feel like it's something they can move, and hopefully someone takes an interest in it.
Yeah, the, the house is added on to in sections, so if you really look at it and see where they could cut.
You can cut.
Cut in sections, it would move easily, so.
Good, okay.
We think we'll, we think we'll do pretty well on a sale.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, any more questions or discussions? Are we going to set a time limit if they purchase it? As to when they remove it off the property?
I think we did adopt some, I can't remember exactly, we drafted an initial advertisement, I don't remember what all of it is.
It's okay, I just, you know, just, I feel like we need to.
30 days.
There's a time limit in there.
Yeah.
60 days, we did something.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what, okay, just clarifying. All right.
But we'll work that out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, page 263, adopt Lee County government social media policy. Ms. Brown?
Hello.
Hello.
So the policy you have in front of you, the last social media policy the county had established was adopted in September 2010. It'd been a long time, so instead of revising, what I did was basically start from scratch and redraft. So the policy you have would completely replace the last one. It goes into much more detail, establishing definitions, social media strategy. Also, very clear guidelines over ownership, user behavior, and content. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any comments or questions?
Who is the designated appointed administrator?
There will be two, it will be myself and the IT director.
Oh, I'm reading, sorry.
It's okay. And I did also include a provision so that we don't find ourselves in the same situation 10 years from now, that the policy, because social media changes so frequently, the policy will be reviewed annually and updated appropriately.
That's smart.
Because there's something brand new every week.
Every five minutes.
I can't keep up, I heard a new one to get, again today, it's crazy. Okay? Any more, any more questions for Ms. Brown, or concerns, or ideas? Or a motion?
Yeah, move to approve.
Okay, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thank you. Okay. Financial report. Ms. Mittler. You'll enjoy this one.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, you have the January financial report. As usual, sales tax run three months behind. Property taxes, we're 1.3% of where we were at the end of January 2019. As far as sales taxes go, we, we are anticipating that we will see a drop in those. Of course, they run three months behind, so it'll be a while before we know those numbers. But if you look at the sales tax reports, I'm going to jump ahead of myself, that are attached to your report, while we went back up in November from what we saw in October, it's still, those refunds that we saw hit us in October are affecting our growth here locally now. Our two sales taxes that we share per capita across the state, Article 40 and 42, seem to be maintaining themselves where our local taxes, which says to me, people are not shopping as much in Lee County as what we're seeing shop across the state. So hopefully, that tide turned for December. December numbers are in, but I haven't, had not had a chance to process those yet and get you new reports. So we'll get those out to you for the next meeting. As far as expenditures go, the target's 58.33%. As you will see, we still have quite a few departments exceeding that, even with taking the encumbrances into consideration, out of the numbers. Most of those are for the same reasons you've been seeing, the new one that popped up is the court facilities, and that is because of the payment to Hornet County for the Veterans Court. So, but the others are all there, and they will bounce, should bounce themselves out as the year progresses. And I've already spoken to you about the sales tax reports through November. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. And we will also be monitoring our investment earnings. We were already starting to see our investment rates drop from the previous drop in the federal rate. And with the feds dropping the rates again yesterday, we are anticipating to continue to see a drop in our investment earnings. So where we had had a really good year last year, and we're looking good, we anticipate that we'll see a little bit of drop in that. We had a visit for cash management last week, and, you know, they forewarned us that they were expecting another rate and a drop, a drop in the Fed's rate. They were not expecting it to be on Sunday. So everybody's kind of scrambling.
About refinancing?
Right now, we have not been approached over any refinancing. Some of our debt is not, most of our debt at this point is not in the stage that it can be refinanced. Where it will help us, hopefully, if we can get to the market, is what we will be borrowing in the near future. We have plans to do an installment purchase. We were hoping to get it out in June, but right now, we are worried that we may have to delay our bid process because of the issues with the virus, that we may not be able to do our pre-bid conferences as we had planned. And that will delay when we can go out to bid, but hopefully, the rates will pay off for that.
Thank you.
But again, our financial advisors are monitoring it, but at this point, if I remember correctly, we do not have any debt that's refundable at this point, at this stage.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, county manager's report.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that the item we added on the rapid food test was put on the consent.
Yes.
I think I missed that when that was done, so thank you for doing that. I'm going to hand out one item, and we'll get to it in just a few minutes as part of my report. Obviously, the last few days have mostly been spent in dealing with the coronavirus and the impacts here locally. And things kind of ratcheted up on Saturday when the governor ordered the schools to be closed. And so we've been dealing with quite a few things since then. There's also been lots of rumors and lots of things out on Facebook, so to, and a lot of the questions are headed towards the Health Department that really aren't health-related. So yesterday, decided to move forward and set up a communications team within the EOC, not fully activate the EOC, but to activate the communications piece. We have phone lines and that type of thing where people could call in and ask us questions. We can also set up an information line where we can post information periodically to keep those, you know, information getting out to the public about what's going on. So we've decided to try to get ahead of that. I have Santiago and Jamie Brown and Shane Seagroves working together to get this set up and get this moving quickly. We hope to, not hope, we are going live tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock answering phone calls. So we've had a team set up. Jamie's running one team, that's the communication outbound team. And Santiago is running the communication team where the inbound calls are coming. And let's see, I do have some phone numbers to give you in just a second.
I was going to make sure.
To, got to make sure I get them right. Let me make sure I get them right.
Did you write them down, too?
Yes, I did bring them.
I have them.
I did bring them. The, let me see. That's the Health Department number. Don't want to give that number out right now.
Here, you want Jamie to do it?
I have them with you.
Yeah. The information line to call in to ask questions is 91. The information line to call in to ask questions is 919-352-3360. I don't have that other number, Jamie, I thought I wrote it down, I did not. Either that or I left it in the EOC.
Sorry. So that, we are deeming that number that the manager's reviewed as the information hotline.
Right.
And then we will have a COVID-19 emergency update line where these will be pre-recorded messages that will go, be recorded at, we're aiming for 10:00, 10:00 AM, 1:00 PM, and 4:00 PM. And that number is 919-718-4686. And the messages will be recorded in English and Spanish.
Okay, great. That's very similar to what we did with the hurricane.
It's the same number.
Right, okay. So it's the same numbers and we're setting up the same deal. And so every morning, and for the foreseeable future, our little COVID-19 response team will be at 9 o'clock. And then we'll update the, you know, the information line where people can call and get the information at 10:00 and then throughout the day. So we think we have a good plan set up moving forward. And some people were pretty, were pretty excited to get involved with it today. And thanks to the Health Department, Heath and his staff, they've been, they worked overtime over the weekend and fielded a lot of phone calls. But, you know, we want them to call our information line in the EOC first. You know, if it's just something like, you know, do we have to close restaurants? Or, you know, anything that's non-personal health-related. You know, if we do get calls about, you know, someone's health, says I'm not feeling well, that kind of stuff, we have a few questions we're going to ask. And then if we, you know, deem they need to call the Health Department, we will give them the Health Department's number and try to transfer, hopefully it will transfer over. But if not, they'll have that number as well. So that's the game plan on that.
Well, those lines be recorded?
Pardon?
Recorded.
No, sir. HIPAA rules would apply, so if someone starts speaking about personal health issues to us, we cannot keep a record of that.
Okay.
So that was another thing that came up today was that, you know, the Health Department staff is certified to talk to patients that are coming there. The people who are manning the EOC are not. So there's, there has to be a line between what we can talk to people about and what we can't. When it gets too personal, it's got to go to the Health Department. Really, we're, they were inundated with calls on every topic and subject related to, to the issues surrounding this. And we've got to get that away from them so they can get, you know, to addressing the health issues. And so we've set that up. They have a support team in place now, we're looking forward to helping them. But that's been the, you know, our issue all day today. We did meet with the city and the town, the community college, and the schools today to try to coordinate, you know, some information back and forth. There's really no updates from the schools other than the closing for two weeks. And there's really no update from the community college. You know, they've stayed on spring break this week and they're trying to figure out how to get labs back into place next week and doing online schooling for their, for their classes. The city and, and the town are concentrating on their services and making sure they keep, keep going, keep up and running. And there are concerns about first responders, so we're all trying to get PPE equipment in place for the first responders and make sure the 911 dispatchers are taking the appropriate information, make sure that our responders know what they're getting into before they get there. And I think that was pretty much everything we discussed today and went over. But it's, it's very evolving. I would encourage the commissioners, if you have any questions, to give, give me a call or give Shane a call or Jamie or Santiago. And we will keep you updated as best we can. Going backwards in my report, the courthouse and government center renovations. We're a little concerned that the bid will not go out on April 3rd because we're not sure that Mosley Architects' policy right now will allow the architect to be here to basically rock, walk all the facilities with potential glitters. So plus you're inviting people into town who weren't from here. And so you're contemplating whether we can do a pre-bid. And in a project like that, doing a pre-bid conference is mandatory.
Yep.
I mean, there's, it's a very complicated, from a design project, so if they have any questions about demolition and renovation, so those projects may get put on hold. And the parks and rec plans, Withers is still willing to move forward, but we're going to have a conversation with them about whether we're going to do that or not. The next thing I guess we need to talk about is, you know, our April 6th meeting. And, you know, what you all want to do with that or wait about that to decide what to do. But, you know, the, the business of our government will continue. And we have to stay open and we have to keep going. So, you know, we need the board to be able to take business action like you did tonight to help us move forward. So I'll let the chair start discussing some of that a little bit.
Okay.
If she'd like to.
Yes, thank you. We've had a lot of discussions today, manager and clerk and attorney. And, you know, as y'all, y'all know how I am, you hope for the best, but you've got to plan for the worst. And with, with what we're being told as far as, you know, the next few weeks, my concern is that, you know, a majority of us unfortunately might be under the weather and, or be married to or, you know, living with, have a child, a parent, a spouse that, that has the virus and, and, you know, we can't risk it coming out. So I had Ms. Parrish and Ms. Gamble dig deep and call all sorts of folks. And our policy right now is we can participate in a meeting by phone. And, you know, I think several of us have done that over time. But our policy is you can't vote. So the Institute of Government has said, well, because my thought early this morning was, well, let's just waive that policy so that if somebody is sick, they can participate by phone like they've been able to, but we will allow them to vote. And, and we'll waive the policy tonight just as a, as a temporary thing, you know, because of the emergency situation that we're in with the public health concern. But if, if you want to weigh in on this, but, I mean, the crux of it is that it really is, if we do it that way, then we all need to do the call-in and not have some here and some somewhere else if we're going to vote that way. Is that correct?
Yeah, it gets a little tricky, but what we, I mean, the number one goal is obviously to at least have a quorum, meet in person. That way we can move forward with county business. And if you have a quorum, then we can, we can do that live. And then we still have the opportunity to have it open to the public, at least, you know, tonight everyone's kind of further apart or we can hold it somewhere with a larger space available. We did check in the circumstance that most of the commissioners, for whatever reason, or it's just unsafe, depending on how the virus spreads, we could allow for a complete remote participation. It would be tricky. We would set up some type of call-in number, what is it, like group meet or meet?
Zoom.
Go to meeting. Go to meeting, go to meeting. What we would have to do, talking with Jennifer, we would go ahead and notice it at least seven days before. So we would need to know seven days beforehand that we were going to meet that way. We would provide the public with that call-in number, the codes and all. By statute, we do have to have at least one public comment section, you know, per month, such as meetings, even, you know, we have to have one meeting a month. So what we would like to do is push out, somehow we would coordinate and push out to the public that they would either want to sign up for public comment or provide their public comment ahead of time. Somehow we would provide that to the, you know, to the members of the meeting at that way. So there, there are ways we can do it that way. Obviously, that's not ideal only in emergency-type situations, but we need to be prepared in case we get to a, you know, situation where we would have to do that.
Because that was my concern, is, you know, hopefully everybody will pay attention to what's being directed by the CDC and it'll be minimal here, but I didn't want us to get to a point where we wouldn't be able to have a quorum and we would need to take votes just to move county business along, you know. And, and then we can't meet and we can't vote on a different way to meet, so we're stuck. You know, it's, it's just, it's not that we'll meet that way the next time, but it's just truly to put an emergency option in place. And then I talked to Mr. Reeves, I talked to the manager, and, you know, we've had a busy day today, hadn't been able to get around all of you, so to have that discussion as we go through this. You know, I'm a firm believer in practice what you preach, you know. So I'm not excited about being in this room and we're not six feet apart like I tell everybody, you know, to be. So maybe at our next meeting, if we're all healthy, you know, Lord willing, is maybe move it to courtroom four. And then that way we'll have a lot more elbow room and, and we won't be as concerned if we have a larger crowd come. Because, you know, I don't want to tell somebody to, you know, leave or stand out in the hall and come in later or something. So I'm just asking for advice.
Yeah, we put some suggested language if the board were to choose to, to go ahead and to vote for the remote participation. And like we said, it would just be in those emergency situations, but as the chair said, who knows what may happen between now and April, but.
Let me ask you a question on the public comment piece. You were saying they would notify you if they were interested in making public comments over the phone?
I think we could do it one in two ways. I think we could allow them to call, like, like Jennifer could keep a list. If someone were to contact her and say, I would like to participate in public comment, then they, we would, or the chair would allow that person, we'd have a list and say, okay, so-and-so.
Just like we call them up here, right.
Or maybe they, we would even allow them to provide public comments to the clerk to be read by the board, the chair. I think there's some different ways we could offer that, maybe. We'd have to look into it. And I'm sure we're not going to be the only county dealing with this as we move forward. We've got our listservs, you know, things are constantly circulating our listservs as well.
I just, I just want to make sure you got a way to cut them off at three minutes.
Well, I can still, I'll be on the calls.
Yeah.
And the staff still has to monitor, you know, however electronically you put it in place. So we may have a mechanism or we can just cut that person off. I know on Zoom I can. So if we're in the right platform, that person's talking and their three minutes is up, we can just click on that button and they're done.
I listen to Swap Shop and I wish I had that authority, Jesus Christ.
About there, good point. Okay.
Hopefully we won't have to do that, but who knows?
Yeah.
So it's just a precaution more than anything.
Oh, absolutely. But that, but in talking to the manager and the clerk and the attorney, that, you know, and I've been talking to other commissioners in, in other counties, you know, we're all kind of learning together. You know, what are you doing? I don't, I don't know, what are you going to do, you know? And that, that, that is just a deep concern that we all have, is, you know, if you, especially these boards that have five, you know. You know, if you, you have.
So we're not voting to suspend a meeting, we're voting to suspend our policy about phone calls?
Voting, voting over the phone.
Right.
It's just, um.
It's just to provide that option. It's not what you're going to have your next meeting.
That makes sense.
Right. Because, you know, again, I, I hope we all stay healthy through all of this, not, but, you know, worst-case scenario, if we couldn't have a quorum, then we wouldn't have a vehicle, a way to vote to do something different.
But you put it in there as it's all or nothing, so all of us are remote or none of us are remote?
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's what they say.
That's the hesitation we've been getting from the School of Government, that that's the way it's supposed to be.
That's the way it should be done.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move to temporarily rescind our current policy on remote participation. I was putting my own words, but she's got good legal stuff here. While at our, while our local state of emergency due to COVID-19 is in effect and per the authority established by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.13, authorize the option of conducting meetings remotely as necessary to protect the public health and safety of members of the board, county employees, and the public at large with notice to be provided to the public of the remote participation forum being used to allow public access to meetings and participation as required by law.
Okay. All right. Any more questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And hopefully we will not have to use that. Which brings me to the first point that was on here, now that we've had the vote on this last one, is again, through our discussions today, we had a really good meeting, you know. And I say it all the time, we have just got such an amazing team in this county with our board, the, the school board, the city, the town, the, the community college. We, we had representatives from all of those, along with the manager and Ms. Brown and Ms. Parrish and Ms. Gamble. And we met in the EOC and we kind of got refamiliarized with that room today. And we went around and as the manager shared, you know, a lot of the highlights of what we talked about. Everybody's ready, as ready as we can be, I think, for something like this. And, you know, I know the city and the town both are going to discontinue any disconnection fees with the water bills for right now. I think both power companies, Duke and Central Electric are not disconnecting during this time. And then I know Dr. Bryan had some great ideas. They're, they're in the process of trying to get the computers, the laptops, to all the students this week with anticipation of, you know, lengthy out-of-school time. And they're really coming up with some creative ideas to create hotspots for Wi-Fi throughout the county so that the kids can, you know, that don't have internet. And I know Spectrum is offering free internet and that information's going out to all the families today. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of creativity going on, a lot of good ideas in the meeting today to be fleshed out as needed. But one of the things that we discussed was going ahead and declaring a state of emergency locally tonight. And, you know, let the manager or the attorney speak more to that. But basically, it's just to help facilitate some things that we just cannot legally do now. But my, my gut feeling was to wait till we had a positive case. But then I'm starting to hear some of the reasons why we might consider doing it beforehand, so.
Well, I, you know, I think that if everybody remembers, the last time we went through a declaration of a state of emergency in the county, there were some issues with, you know, putting curfews in, in effect and that kind of thing. I don't think in this case we'll be putting a curfew in effect. We won't be limiting alcohol sales and, you know, limiting the hours of retail businesses or anything like that. This declaration would be mainly to make sure that we get reimbursement from the federal government for expenses that exceed our normal operating cost to run the county. So it would make us eligible for, for grants from them. And then the other thing is if we had to close facilities but wanted to allow our employees to go into those facilities, which is kind of an odd thing that the School of Government advised us about today, but, you know, we would need to have that declaration to do that because when a building's open, it's a public building, you know, those public places should be accessible. But it would give me the authority to make sure that certain places in our buildings are not accessible to the public while our people are in the building, cleaning the buildings, doing work that they need to be doing. But, you know, obviously this building here, as long as DSS and the Health Department need to service people, you know, this building. need to service people, you know, this building will stay open, but we have other buildings that we can close, but we'll probably have employees in there working. That's one of the things we had talked about was, you know, whether we could get employees to work remotely. We have identified some employees that will be working remotely, we have to set those systems up for them to do that, but we plan on trying to keep most of our employees working in their current location or in the EOC, so, but the declaration helps us do those things, and it's not the one we're preparing right now for the chairman to sign, would not, you know, create a curfew or anything like that.
It's mainly to facilitate things.
And then with, with us partially opening the EOC, you know, that the, you know, emergency management will be monitoring what we're doing and makes us eligible for those grants.
So that's what we've been doing today.
And our ordinance allows the chairperson to, to declare a local's emergency by way of the ordinance, but we just.
Right, I, I mean, we were meeting tonight.
Yeah.
And so after the meeting today, I said, well, you know, we'll just discuss it, you know, see if you had any problems or advice or any more ideas or anything, but, I mean, I certainly don't want to put us in a position where we can't apply for grants or reimbursement because we didn't do this, you know.
So technically, what we're saying, and Dr. Crumpton can confirm this, is that from this point on, if we make this declaration, we open ourselves reimbursement for any costs and expenses above and over our normal operating costs that are entailed into this situation we're dealing with now.
Correct. And the real, the real thing where I see the, you know, the most cost is in any overtime that we would put in with emergency management folks and the folks who are manning the EOC. So that's the biggest, you know, cost that I see right now, I don't, you know, and then we'll be feeding those people, so it's really the cost to run the EOC that I see right now is something that we can get reimbursed for.
And then allowing you that, the opportunity for the facilities if the need were to arise, because apparently you don't need the local state of emergency to close a facility or to restrict some of the access to the facility, but if you wanted to open and, I mean, to limit the access, but if you wanted, like Dr. Crumpton said, if you want to open and restrict people, you have to have a local state.
In a public facility, public means public. Yeah.
I move we declare a local state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic and according to our ordinance, authorize the chair to formally execute the state of emergency and authorize any superseding declaration.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? You know, and as far as that, those last two words with the superseding declarations, you know, in the event that anything would, would require us to do anything else, we would certainly get that information out to the board before we move forward, is my personal feeling on that.
Well, again, it's just a precautionary measure.
Absolutely.
Be in place, not after the fact.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
There's one other option you didn't mention, and that was allowing the manager and other staff to look at April agenda and see what we, whether we really need to be here or not.
Let's go talk about that for April, April 6, right?
Softly seeing with what we're looking at.
Or go to one meeting in April.
In April, yeah. The second.
We will, we will look into that and, and talk with y'all about what we have coming up.
We ready to vote on that for a sec?
Not yet.
I will.
If you want to go ahead and make the motion, make the motion.
We have one meeting in April.
Okay.
And if anything crazy, we can always.
We'll call a special meeting if we need to.
So we're going with April 20, sir?
I'm good, fine.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. One more.
I passed out a policy that, on leave that I thought about over the weekend and worked with our human resource director on. We have some issues with parents mainly of, that work for us who have children at home now and who are having issues with finding people to work with them, I mean, to stay with them and that kind of thing, so, and plus, we're going to have some folks that will be unemployed for a little bit. So this was our suggestion to the board that we adopt a personal leave policy associated with, with a pandemic, so this not only can occur this time, but could be used in the future, and it allows benefit and non-benefited employees to essentially get one week of paid leave to take care of issues associated with the pandemic, and then under item 3.2C, it also allows our employees to use vacation or sick leave during a pandemic declared event to cover missed time that the personal time accrual that we're giving them would not cover. So let's say it extends for a long period of time, and these people have to be out taking care of their loved ones, they can use, and it's not someone that's sick, it's just that like they need to be home to take care of them, they can use their sick leave. That's not currently in our sick leave policy. Our sick leave policy is for when you are sick, so looking at the accruals, we have some people who have lots of vacation and no sick leave, and then we have some people who have, you know, a lot of sick leave but no vacation, and so you look at that and you're trying to figure out what's best for the employees so that in this unusual time can take care of their families and their loved ones. So this, this was our suggestion to get things rolling on that, on that piece, and fortunately, right now, we, we have a few people that have this issue, but not a lot, so probably less than 20. So most of our, our parents have been able to make arrangements, at least for the short term, but if this draws out, this will at least help them try to get through it and, you know, use their leave accruals to do it.
Motion to approve this.
So move.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Thomas? Okay. Commissioner Reeves?
Be brief and be safe.
Yes.
Absolutely. Our Health Department is doing a lot. We have things in place and look at the right information, because there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Yes, there is.
Be prepared. Don't be full of fear, but be prepared.
And be serious.
Yes, it is.
Just be safe, and Joyce, I need you to get Amy a raise for all these meetings she does. All this time, extra.
I get, I get to spend my time with a lot of really good people, so.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, well, it's the same thing, but, you know, also do things that help boost your immune system.
Madam Chair, I want to thank the staff for the daily updates and multiple updates that, that we get from the state and emergency services, Heath and his staff, thank you. This is a trying time, but this will pass.
Now, I just want to reiterate my thanks to our staff. I brag on everybody all the time, I still say we have the best staff in the state, and Heath and Jessica and Angie and, you know, your, your team have been fantastic, and, and Jamie is always just right there getting the information out and doing the updates, and that's going to continue. Shane definitely had the EOC ready to go with Kyle hooking up phones and crawling under really heavy pieces of furniture today when I was there. We were worried about some workman's comp issues, but thankfully, that went okay. So I, I think, like we talked about Friday, we're as ready as we can be, and everybody's really working hard and pulling together. The meeting we had this afternoon, again, was, was really good, you know, everybody's working as a team and helping each other out. It is going to be a trying time for the next few weeks or a little longer, maybe a lot longer, but just, you know, my, my little speech is, you know, remember what we're here for. We're supposed to be here for each other, and sometimes we're called to look after each other in ways that are different, and this is really different this time, because, you know, it's looking after each other is staying at home and not going out necessarily and doing something. The, the best way to protect your neighbor is to stay at home and spend time with your family. When you put it that way, you know, that's not such a bad thing, and it's, it's going to be some tough times, though, we talked about that a lot today with, with our folks in the restaurant business, hotels, our small businesses. This, this is going to be tough, so again, we're going to have to get creative about things and, and, and come up with new and different solutions that we haven't done before, that we haven't used. So as was mentioned in the meeting, you know, don't go eat at your favorite restaurant, but order some takeout and, you know, support them in that way, or if a small business, if you can order something from them online to keep them in business, that's a good idea as well, and just hang in there together. Just to throw this out for the board, if I can get it back up, I, I was contacted by Daniel Simmons, our Boys and Girls Club Director, something that they are talking about in Chatham County is for their Boys and Girls Club in Chatham County to serve as childcare for the first responders or medical folks in Chatham County, and he was asking if I was aware of any grants or funding that, that would help the Boys and Girls Club in that endeavor. Again, a creative solution, I hadn't even thought about that, but, you know, we've got doctors and nurses and EMS folks that are on the front lines of this thing, that, you know, we're definitely going to need them to be able to work, and, and so that's something they're exploring in Chatham County. I, I personally didn't know the answer, you know, about any funding available, and, and they're right here, they're getting ready to have one of their big fundraisers coming up, and that's not happening, so I was just throwing that out to the board and to the manager, you know, if there's any ideas on that or just something we can meet with him this week on.
I got called today as well, and have several emails about it, and talked with Shane about, you know, whether they would be eligible for any of this grant funding that could come down, so we are looking into it, but I don't, I don't have an answer right now.
Okay. Well, just to make y'all aware, you know, we, we, there's, there's a lot of really good people trying to do good things and come up with, with different solutions, so, you know, if you hear of anything, share. Dr. Chapman's got some things that she's working on, and also the Cougar Closets for food for the CCCC students will be open during all this, even though the college is closed. So keep that in mind if you talk to someone that has connection with one of those students that might have a need for them to check the CCCC website, and they'll have, you know, shortened hours, but they will have the, the Cougar Closet open. Okay? I think that's it. And stay safe, six feet, you know.
Do we still have a closed session?
We, we have, we, we, we do have a, a brief one, yes.
Madam Chair, I move if we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property.
We're in closed session, but, yeah, we are.
We're going to stand here.
Yeah. Everybody take a little break. Everybody take a little break.